It's been approved. Moving right through the, the agenda, item number three. Public comments on non-agenda items only. Are there any comments on non-agenda items?
Anybody want to make comments that's on the phone or on a Zoom call that want to make comment? You can put your name in the chat box and we'll be able to notify you and then it be able to be unmuted. I'm not seeing anyone or any reactions from anyone saying that they want to be heard at this time. I suggest we give a couple more minutes, or just a few more seconds so that.
Okay.
Not in trouble. Opportunity.
Not a problem. Hearing no comments on non-agenda items, we're going to move to item number four. Approval. Are these the June minute? Let's see, this is July. Yeah, approval of the June minutes, please. Ask for, I mean, we need a motion for approval.
Sir, excuse me, it's actually approval of the May minutes. We didn't have a board meeting.
Right, right, May minutes, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I'll move, I'll move, I'll move approval of the rubber meeting minutes for May twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
It's been properly moved and second for approval of the May twenty eight minutes, twenty twenty. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Obatowski?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Tinnawith?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
It's been properly moved and second to approve the minutes of May twenty eight to twenty twenty. Moving right through the agenda, item number five. New business.
So I'll take care of item number five. Item number five, new business resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen. Approval of pre-development loan for Sugar Creek. Sugar Creek is one of our developments that we're doing. A lot of times this is pretty common where we have a pre-development loan for this, this pre-development law is in the amount of, excuse me. A hundred and.
One seventeen, five hundred, David.
One seventeen, five hundred, and to purchase the land, to have secure personal land so we can move toward closing. And once we close, we'll see that money back. That's the cover half, that's our half of the development partnerships for that. So we pay, they pay half, we pay half, and once we close, we get that money back.
David?
Yes.
Where do those funds come from that we're using for the pre-development loan?
Those, those ones come from our, our, most of those funds come from our non-development funds, I mean, our non-HUD related funds. But also in our MTW plan, we have development activities, so we can use MTW, some MTW funds related to that. But we have enough non-federal dollars in order to use that money. Again, the closing should occur within the next, within the next month, I would say, Eric Wright, based on our conversations and our timelines.
Yeah, the, the, the closing on this, on the real estate has to be before the end of the month. But then the closing for the entire project, we're probably looking at mid-August for that. Mid, I'm, I'm confident it'll be the end of, end of August. They're talking about mid-August, but I think there's going to be a few things we need to firm up, but probably within the next month or so.
And sir, sir, again, this is traditionally, we have this in most cases when we secure a land, we always get, you know, letters securing the land. You have to always close on a property before we move and close on an actual development.
Okay, thank you.
So if there's no other questions, I'm requesting that the board members approve new business item one, resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen. For Sugar Creek.
Okay, we've had, we've had, we've had approval, we're asking for approval for this motion. And we have roll call. First of all, we need to have us, it's, we need to get it approved and then a second.
I'll move approval for a resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen, approval of pre-development loan for Sugar Creek.
A second.
You have a second, please.
A second.
Probably. Thank you. It's been probably moved and second, may we have roll call?
Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Obatowski?
You muted, Rebecca muted.
Sorry, yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Tinnawith?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Okay. Number six. We'll have the chief executive offers to report.
Well, first I want to say it's good to see you guys. I had an opportunity to communicate with a few of you guys. I know we've been busy in terms of, you know, each individual, but also as an organization, we've been quite busy in some of the things that we've been trying to do. We didn't have a meeting last month. It was not a whole lot of approval type activities that was needed to take place. But we've been moving things forward with the organization for the benefit of our clients that we serve here in the county. I won't read this complete packet for two months. I'm sure you guys don't want me to get everything out to you. But I do a brief summary of some highlights of what we had as an example from our report. As you've probably seen, we've been able to put out a lot of good information and share the wealth in terms of information related to not only our programs, but other programs within the community. We received a few grants, we received a broadband grant and that's to help connectivity for our clients. You know, that was through, we also received a, a grant, a COVID grant for ten thousand dollars to help purchase Chromebooks for our UCL participants. You know, we started our UCL program, we started virtually, and right now we have about thirteen participants. We've gone through our second mental toughness where we add more participants. And it's been challenging, but it's been great. They've done a number of great activities in the community, as a community service. So, so worthwhile with it is that a number of our young people receive job opportunities. And not only are they going through youth bill during the day, but in some of the afternoons and stuff, they have job opportunities because a lot of community members and some of our contractors stepped up to hire them to help give them better opportunities related to their experience in youth bill and overcoming the many obstacles that they may have to overcome. We all see as an uptick in violence throughout the communities and, you know, our communities aren't any different. And so we're really working hard to try to come up with strategies to eliminate the possibilities of any violence occurring in our properties that we oversee, that we manage and we develop. We received five awards of merit for client programs from NARO. We had a number of press releases and we have a number of articles and interviews that's been done on our various programs, you know, throughout. So, so even though we've dealt with COVID, we've been able to still maintain a level of excellence in terms of providing our programs and getting our information out into the community. Most of the commissioners was a part of. Whoa. Oh, okay, I see. Sorry, you were bringing up the reports, okay. So most of the commissioners was a part of or saw that we had a, a press conference and we announced the change into our current background policy, which we was applauded from a number of members of the community. We think that's the totally right thing to do. And just recently, the state announced, and we announced also about our new re-entry program, which deals with individuals coming straight out of Department Corrections. We're working with landlords to help house those individuals. Just a couple of days ago, Channel Three News came out and interviewed Mr. Colbert and myself down at one of our re-entry homes about that new program. That's a partnership between the state, I mean, well, the Lieutenant Governance Office, Ida, and the Department Corrections, and we're one of the local housing agencies that's receiving funding to help lease up individuals coming out of incarceration. We have, we have money for three years and fifteen vouchers. Some of it is admin fees to manage the program. But we're excited and looking forward to getting our first referral from that program. A number of people have been leased up with our special COVID voucher and the, the continuum care reached out and asked. We originally said we was going to stop that voucher opportunity at the end of this month of July. We extended it because we want, we still have the resources to offer up to the fifty housing spots. And so as people still, we know that population also is hard to house, so I know, we, we know it may take them a little longer. So we want to extend that to give them that opportunity, but we're working with the various service providers to help make that possible. And one of the things that we want to continually do is, even though we had COVID utilizing the technology, on the Zoom technology, we continually have our panel discussions. We've had, we hosted every couple of weeks. It's called the balcony and the dance floor, where we get experts or housers from across the nation or, and locally, and just talk about various issues that, that we're dealing with in terms of affordable housing and COVID. Next Friday's panel discussion, that's July thirtieth, it'll be at eleven AM. We always do it on Zoom and then we also share it on Facebook Live. But we'll have Julie Pride, the Champagne County Champagne Urbana Public Health Administrator, George Guy, the CEO of the Champagne County Housing Authority, and Steve Resavaro. He's the Housing Choice Program Director for Namakane Associates, which is one of our major housing consultants. And this discussion will be about reopening and, and reopening to a new norm. And so as housing authorities and other organizations look at that process of reopening, which we have our plan together around reopening. Also, we wanted to make sure that we brought in experts and talked to people that's working on reopening plans along with the health department. And so we'll make sure we get you guys the flyers and as we advertise that information, if you want to hear what's going on related to that. Let me see what else we have. We're continually leasing up in a Bristol Place. Haven is leasing up and has come to fruition. We're working on planning a groundbreaking for Pinewood. We've been in conversation with the mayor's office. That project is coming down, we're coming down to the wire, we're getting ready to start on that development. Let me see. There's just so much that's been going on. Again, I provided you guys with a full overview of, you know, our, our activities in, in the report. So I won't, like I said, sit here and read through all of it. We also have provided a number of letters to Congress in support of a number of the COVID activities along with, you know, the special funding. I see Commissioner Tinnawith had a question or had her hand raised?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. So first of, I just wanted to thank the Housing Authority for the temporary stay-at-home waitlist preference. As someone who works closely with the homeless, this waitlist process is really a game changer for our community. So we have dozens of high shelter users who are being considered for available housing. And this really addresses safety concerns with shared shelter. So as you all may know, the shelter, the men and women's shelter is now year-round, which is huge, and we're really excited about that. And in partnership with the Housing Authority, we have emergency family shelter, which is really essential at this time of need. The issue is that the year-round shelter is shared dwelling. So there is risk, you know, with folks sleeping on the floor in a shared dormitory situation. So I just want to applaud the Housing Authority for making this essential life-saving move. We work with several folks, there's multiple partners at the table with the Housing Authority, and we did a, I think, a great collaborative job of ranking folks based on the folks with kind of the highest vulnerabilities. And we're seeing people move, you know, moving in the right direction. So it's just been such an essential piece of the equation in our community. I just want to thank the Housing Authority for taking that step. I had two questions. One, well, actually, one will be about the housing data, so I'll wait on that. Just with Bristol Place, we have fourteen statewide referral network units that they've contracted. When I checked in April, there were no referrals or, or placements. As of yesterday, I did a check and there were three referrals and two placements. So I just wanted to see if it appears that that statewide referral network process is working and that they're able to receive the referrals and lease up those fourteen units. Because that's another really important tool that we have at our disposal to help folks who are homeless be able to, and vulnerable, be able to access, especially families with children, because that's the target of Bristol Place. So I just want to make sure that we're kind of tracking that SRN piece, because initially I heard that there had been no referrals. And I said, I don't think that's right. So I know Ida took a look at it and they were able to start moving those referrals. So I just want to check in on, you know, any status update with those fourteen SRN units.
As, as you mentioned, we are moving in that direction. If you guys can remember earlier, we brought Ida down. The housing authority facilitated Ida to come down and give some local training around a statewide referral network, because we saw that was a barrier that a lot of people didn't understand it, and some of us may have not even understand it correctly. But we are working with Bristol Place along with our other developers, developments, and to ensure that we utilize those referrals in the right way. I know Tamika and her staff, you know, along with Robin, has been on top of all those referrals. I don't have any, you know, updates right now on those numbers. I didn't take a look at that, but we will, I can follow back up with you. My team will get the information pulled and see what we got today as relate to those referrals or lease ups.
Wonderful. And it sounds like the, the re-entry grant is actually a second grant, right, David? So this is the second grant, and the first one came the, earlier this year, and then this is a second grant on top of that?
No, actually, the, actually, the announcement was that we was awarded as one of the local housing administrators for that grant. Now, we've been working with the other local housing administrators throughout the state and the state and the Department Corrections. Now the program's officially open for referrals. So that's the announcement, that is open for referrals now.
Got it. Okay, so basically, we're going to start seeing lease ups going forward because we've opened that program.
Yes.
That's wonderful and also a really significant and important program. So thanks to your staff for securing that grant.
No problem at all. Like I said, we, we actually aggressively, just to tie into what, you know, about that grant. You know, we received a number of grants to help work with our clients and move them to a better direction. But we're also working with a number of other grants locally. You know, a number of partners reach out to, we just partnered with Carl on a new grant. I don't know the names of all the grants, because we have so many different ones coming through. But our team is working really hard to secure all the dollars and funding and resources that we can bring in and help utilize to bring our clients to the next level. As, as you know, last year, we talked about how Ford County was relinquishing fifty vouchers to us, you know, far as their Housing Choice voucher program. But also we in the final stages of negotiations with Edgar County to manage seventy-five of their vouchers also. And so as we continually get grants, as we continually get programs, seeing that we can do a better job in terms of managing the vouchers or utilizing those vouchers, that's just bringing more resources that we have, whether it's financial resources or hard resources in terms of units to our community to help our clients and, and our citizens that we serve. So that, that's just continually to be exciting. Just, the governor was here actually on Monday, late Sunday night, I got a text that the governor was going to be in town and he was doing a press release at the Urbana Neighborhood Connections, Community Connections. And they were announcing that about the COVID nineteen Youth Employment Project Grant. And, you know, the housing authority, they had called over and asked us that we would be one of the work sites to allow the young people to work on our sites, whether it's cleaning and things like that. So Lily's been working with them to help coordinate that, and so that's nice. Not only did they reach out to us to ask, could they do some work on our site? Our own youth bill has been working on a number of our sites to help clean them up and make them better in terms of curb appeal. But it was another project, I can't remember the name of that project. Lily, if you can mention it, it'd be great. But it's another youth program that wanted to do some work on some of our sites also. You know, so, you know, just, just continually partner utilizing our resources and our properties to help our other programs in the community has been great. As I am, before I move on into the operational areas of the report, this Friday, Ashley sent the email out to the commissioners. This Friday, the HUD Regional Administrator will be in town.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
That's a ready to commute from.
Hello?
Randy.
Come here. Hurry up. I need to put this mic on. Come on, I need you now.
Mic on, the mic is on. Commissioner Turnbull, we hear you.
Hello, I'm trying to talk. Anybody hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
I'm trying to talk on this and I'm not getting any sound. I need you to come over here now. Can you come in here, Serenity, now?
We, Commissioner Turnbull? Hello, can you, can you guys hear me?
No.
Hello?
Okay, can anybody hear me? Because I'm trying to talk. I had my hand up.
Yeah, we hear you.
Still not talking. Come next, Serenity. It's not working.
Here, go, go this way, go this, tap to speak. About down here. And then that's somebody else's.
What's that? Is that on?
And then you want your video, you want to see, you want people to see you, right?
And then I want to also talk. Hello, can anybody hear me? Because I've been muted.
Yeah, we hear you.
Still not hearing me.
Okay, turn this up, is that up?
It's up. Okay, put it on.
Okay.
Is it muted?
It's.
Hello, can anybody hear me? Because I've been muted. Does it don't know? I don't know why it's muted.
I don't know why. I'm trying to figure this out. Um.
We, we hear you, Commissioner Turnbull.
Is it on? Hello?
We hear you guys.
Need you to come out here so we get this working. Okay, is anybody hearing me? Because I've been muted.
We hear you.
Was it on now?
Okay.
Hello?
Yes. We hear you.
Tap to speak. Hello?
Yes.
Okay, hello? Cannot hear anything. I'm gonna call in. Okay, I'm gonna go in here and call in. You call in.
Okay.
So what, a call in right here?
Where?
Call in right here.
Yeah. Press it. Here.
Okay.
I just had it.
Hold on, hold on.
I know Commissioner Turnbull wanted to make some comments. She's had some technical difficulty. Dr. Henry, is it okay for us to move on until she's signed back in and then maybe we'll stop and then allow her to communicate?
Did you hear me?
Right, okay. Now, yeah, I was wanting to know if we can move on and then come, come back when she get back online or whatever.
Yes, I would like for you to move forward with the continuation of the operations reports and the comments you may have.
And so again, I apologize for that, but again, on Friday, the Regional Administrator from HUD, Joe Galvin, he will be here on Friday from eleven to one to look at our, if you want to do a site visit. We've been awarded a vision center, which aligns with helping clients overcome obstacles. And so he'll be here and if any commissioners would like to attend, he asked that we make sure that we mentioned that he wanted to be social distancing. So we asked that if you wanted to attend, commissioners only, please RSVP so that we could make room for that visit. And lastly, as, as we can, as, as, my last comments I want to make is around the appointments for our commissioners. We know we have two commissioners who are up, one is. We have two, we have two commissioners that's coming up for reappointment in terms of our resident commissioner along with Champagne County, I mean Champagne, the city of Champagne has an appointment coming up, and that's with Commissioner Rose. And so we haven't really heard from.
Hello? Is anybody hearing me?
Yes.
Yes, I was muted for a long while. I had my hand up. I had to go out and come back in on the computer. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we hear, we heard you then too. I don't know why you didn't hear us though. We heard you.
Yeah, but I didn't hear you guys, but I was trying to speak when Danielle spoke, because I wanted to speak on the waitlist and I never got a chance to, to find out how many people are on the waitlist now with all the combined together on the waitlist.
I, I don't have a.
Can I get that later then? Can Ashley just email that to me? How many people are on the waitlist? Since you don't have that information?
We have it. It's, it's in the packet. I just, I'm not at that page right now, but we'll make sure we see the exact number of the people who's on the waitlist. Is, is the waitlist?
I want a combined of all the units of the waitlist of how many people on the waitlist.
Okay.
Yeah, because I had to go out of this computer two times with technical issues. So we need to go back to the boardroom because we're not able to get fair chance of speaking about different stuff on this, on this Zoom here. Something is not going correctly with it. Okay, so where are we at now? Because I missed out on some stuff. If it goes out again, I'm just letting you know if I'm not able to say yes, no, you know why.
Yes, yes. And I apologize for that. I'll make sure that we take a look at our technical and see how maybe we can, you know, fine tune some things. But as, as I mentioned, as we look at moving to reopening, one of the things that we.
Yeah, because when Danielle was speaking, I had my hand up for like ten minutes and nobody ever called on me. And then the sun went out and I had to go out of the email, go back in the email. I was going to dial in, couldn't dial in. And then I had to go back through this and play with it about fifty, not fifteen minutes, but so much to get back into it.
I apologize. I didn't see, I didn't see your hands up. Like, it's, it's, it's a, it's a chat box and there's a reaction box on, on a computer.
Yeah, it's a lot of stuff going on with this. It's not correct. I know it's not your fault. It's computer glitch. But we can carry on and get through this.
Okay. All right, sorry about that. I was just making sure the staff get that down for them. All right. Oh, I was mentioning before we move to the operation reports that the. Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Channel was had looked through the numbers. We had nine hundred and eighty-seven people on a waitlist for vouchers, but you know, like I said, for all the combined list that we have, we'll make sure we get that to you.
That's nine hundred just with one area, but you had all units together. At one time it was fifteen hundred. So did it go down from fifteen hundred to nine? Or you just got one unit at nine hundred?
You know, the, the nine hundred, it was like nine hundred and eighty-seven. I think she mentioned that was just for the part that's related to the Housing Choice voucher that was in.
I want a combination of all the waitlist together, how much.
The report that we sent you is in there, but we'll pull it out and make sure we send it to you, like, and break it down. Okay?
Yeah, because I know before when we talked about the waitlist, it was more than nine hundred. I thought it was fifteen hundred or more than that. But you had all places combined with the waitlist and I want each one how much it is. Because I know it was the calculation of close to fifteen hundred or more.
I'm not, I'm not sure who, Tamika, or Tamika or Lily, could you get somebody to pull the waitlist numbers while we're on the phone, while we're on this call?
Yes, I'll go ahead and call them.
Send an email out, so, so she can get the numbers for us, please.
No problem.
All right. So as I was finishing up, we have two appointments for commissioners, one resident commissioner and one appointment. The resident commissioner's appointment previously was in the form of election and it was from the county. And we have the city of Champagne's appointment. And each commissioner that's not replaced serve until a appointment or placement is made. Had some conversations with Champagne. At this point, I haven't heard that they ready to make a replacement, Commissioner Rose. So we hope that you stay on and serve until they find a replacement and make some decisions around that. And also Commissioner Turnbull, the same thing with you, we're still.
Yeah, because I want, again, to be re-elected. And not only that, we're supposed to be looking at the way I'm being re-elected. It's supposed to be through, we are a. we're supposed to be looking at the way I'm being reelected is supposed to be through, we are a public housing, it's supposed to be through the Resident Advisory Board, but you guys want to do some changing with the bylaws, the board won't be that way anymore, so I guess we're gonna discuss that.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I had a couple of conversations with, well, we had, we had our conversation on our last board meeting and we've had a couple of conversations offline about it, you and I, and I had a couple of conversations with Dr. Henry and I talked to the county also, so, you know, we're looking at the, the best way to do it, but the county agrees that right now until we figure out how we gonna make our changes, especially with what's going on with COVID, it's not a rush because the, the bylaw state that any commissioner is not replaced continues to serve, so both Commissioner Turnbull and Rose are in these places unless they decide not to be. So we don't want to try to rush something through or get something done in the midst of this pandemic.
No, I don't want to rush anything through because like I said, I would love to serve again, but I want to serve in the right capacity, that mean the way to be reelected like I was reelected before, and if anything changes, we need to change that in the bylaws, we have to agree on that, but since we are still public housing, we should be still going with the same guidelines that we have because that unless we have something that's gonna improve it. The way they been, how they been elected me, if something is differently, that you can make better, I wouldn't be willing to go along with that, but if nothing better than what they already have with the guidelines, we should be staying with those guidelines unless it's something different that you can improve.
We, we will be in touch when we get to the point of changing the bylaws and like I said before, we are having a communication with both the county and the city of Champagne. And if we decide to make, change the way we doing far as elections, we'll also be in contact with the city of Urbana because there's a three-way agreement related to the three appoint officials and how the points are made. Now, unless the commissioners had any questions related to the executive director or CEO report, we'll move to MTW client outreach reports unless you guys, you know, like I said, there's a lot of reports in here, there's a lot of information that we provided to you, in most cases, we allow you to ask questions from these reports if you will have any. If not, we down to the financial reports and we go through those. But I do want to say, as I mentioned earlier, we have, you know, Bristol Place is leasing up freshly, Haven is getting ready, we're starting to lease up on the new story building, we're starting to accept the applications for that. Pine Wood, we looking to have a groundbreaking coming soon, either the end of August or the beginning of September related to that, that's in Urbana, I had some conversations with the Urbana mayor, he's excited about developing something new in Urbana. You know, other projects, we have a couple of closings coming and some projects are underway. And so, you know, we're just excited, we're staying busy, you know, it's a lot of great things going on, they just showing a picture of Oakfield Place who's under construction now, you know, is moving along, you know, once, once this, hopefully when things calm down, I wanted to take all the commissioners on a road trip and maybe give them opportunity to see some of our developments that's a little further away, so they can kind of, you know, I know you see pictures all the time, but you know, it's good to see it in person when we get that opportunity, so unless there's any other questions, we can move forward, you know, to the financial report unless you guys had any particular questions. She had a question related to something, related to some, you know, maybe some numbers, lease up numbers or property management report or something? Commissioner Channell?
Sorry, I'm trying to move the tools here, there, I just had a quick question. Oh, I had a question that is, it looks like, oops, looks like there are a hundred and forty-four people searching on with the housing choice vouchers, which is higher than we typically had, we were like in the eighties and nineties. I can have like a little tracker, and I, I guess I would love your perspective on why voucher holders are having more trouble finding spaces, the lease, when there is so many vacancies in the community and just thinking about, you know, how we could help solve that problem, certainly our office helps people locate housing in Urbana and I have interns who support that process, but just curious what, what you make of that trend and kind of what it means for us going forward.
You know, one, one thing is we certain is that with the increase in resources that we have, we giving more people opportunity to go out and search and find units and as always, it's first come, first served and, and, you know, individuals that, and we try to express that to them, if at the end of the day, they not able to lease up and we have no more resources available, they may be out of luck, however, since we're in a good financial position, we would go as far as we can to make sure people are leased up and that's why we comfortable putting it out there. Now, some of the barriers that I see, you know, that we continually have is that right now during COVID is, is really challenging with some landlords and with some clients in order to follow through, I think that's been in the delay in a number of reasons while, while the, the search numbers are out there, but you can see based on those search numbers is that we're briefing and getting people out there and we extending the search times, we're not terminating people because we know it's hard to house, it's a whole hard to house situation right now, it's just not about a person with a disability or a person that's homeless, it's just a whole, the time that's going on right now is really hard to, to get people housed. And if you, if, well, if we can do anything, maybe we can, maybe your staff and our staff can talk and if, if you're willing to help, if you have staff that willing to help people locate units, now far, far as reentry, we're working with landlords to help in that area. We haven't, we don't really have a staff to do that in the other areas, but if you have staff to do that, maybe we can coordinate and make a referral and say, hey, township could help you in, in this way if you need some assistance in.
Well, they, and they, our, our, your staff, your staff, your staff regularly to rental assistance and when we do rental assistance, if people request it, we can also help them and we have lists now of landlords who regularly take rental assistance. Obviously, everyone should, but we have those, and so we have those lists that we give to folks and we also pass on the tenant union information and we'll even make calls to landlords with our interns, so, yeah, happy to help with that, but it makes sense if we have more vouchers that we're putting out there, then we would have more people circulating as part of what I'm hearing. And certainly some folks are having a harder time having safe, you know, like, you know, looking at housing in a safe way and tenants allowing them to come in and look at housing, so that makes sense, but anything that our office can do to help, we're certainly happy to.
Why don't I do, Commissioner, I have where my staff can reach out to your staff, maybe we can do a joint flyer saying that you guys could help with unit search or something?
Okay.
Yeah, know that, I want to, you know, coming out.
Great, thank you.
Is there any other questions before we move into the finance, financial reporting areas of our board meeting? Okay, here and then.
Out again.
Oh, excuse me? Commissioner Turnbull? Commissioner Turnbull? Well, here, here and then, could Miguel, could you briefly point out a few areas?
Get one out again, I'm gonna try to figure out, put the speech back.
Can we move ahead with the approval, I mean, with the financial reports, please?
Okay. Miguel?
Yes, good afternoon.
Again, just before Miguel start, just remember these financial reports are related to both May and June.
Yes, I just want to point out that we are actually presenting information also for the other non-for-profits. There are reports for Maple Grove, Oakwood Trace, the Enrichment Foundation, Housing Authority and Richmond Foundation. And in the case of Youth Built, it's actually being presented inside Housing Authority, we are currently using Housing Authority's checking account and the money is being reversed back by Youth Built. I know that eventually this Youth Built, which we have as a program here in Housing Authority, at least for accounting purposes will become an entity of its own. The Champagne County Youth Built, Housing Authority of Champagne County Youth Built. So I, I wanted to, to mention that because like I said, there's some reports that are there and this is the first time we are, we're presenting them. As Mr. Northern pointed out, we are showing results for both May and June, since we didn't have a, a meeting last month. On page forty-eight, you can see the results for, the dispersments for May and on page forty-nine, the dispersments for the month of June. Those are detailed and if you notice what I just mentioned a few minutes ago, Youth Built is being reported there. But we know that eventually it's gonna be an entity on its own. So then I would be reporting it on its own as well. I would like to point out a few of the, of the expenses that are most relevant. In the month of May, on page fifty-six, there was a payment to Gramercy Park for over twelve thousand dollars, which is actually a combination of several payments to Gramercy Park. These were the cases of lease break fees that were charged to some of the tenants who moved to Haven, being relocated from, from Skelton temporarily in, in Gramercy Park and those were lease breaking fees. The next thing to point out is already, is already customary because we've had it in the last few months and we have it both in May and in June and page fifty-eight is a payment of thirty-five thousand dollars, five hundred, the RAP RAP vacancy payment to Prospect Senior for Haven. So like I said, we've had that in the, in the months before and we have it once again, both in May and in June. There is also a payment in the month of May on page sixty-one to the county collector, which is actually two payments of real estate taxes for pine wood, two installments, so those add to the ten thousand dollars. Going to June now, on page sixty-four, there is a, a payment to, to BDO for twenty thousand dollars. I just want to mention that we had to rely on, on BDO a little more than just the fee accountant, they were actually helping us. If you notice, the, the financial results for this meeting are actually June's, which I believe is the first, is the first time we're, we're catching up there. With restructuring, the finance department then, quite frankly, COVID hasn't helped very much, but we, we're, we're getting there. The last, the last participation of BDO has been more limited and like I mentioned in, in the last meeting, it should be, their participation should more and more be reduced just to the fee accountant. So those, those type of expenses are certainly going to be reduced with the restructuring of, of the finance department. On, on page sixty-eight, there's a payment to Ben Foster, Ben Foster for thirty-six thousand dollars and Lily would, would, would know much more about this, this was training for Youth Built participants. And like I said before, when Youth Built is, would, would be an entity and so it will be reported separately. But for now, we are using the general fund cash account of Housing Authority, but this is going to be refunded from, from the grant that the program receives. Another, again, Prospect Senior, like I mentioned before, is on page sixty-eight for the same amount of thirty-five thousand dollars for the RAP RAP vacancy payment. Going to page seventy-six, there is a payment to Orkin for ten thousand dollars. It's actually made of several invoices to Orkin. These are basically bed bug treatments and the great majority, I think there's only one that is in this, this tier. So we've had a, quite a bit of, of, of invoices there to pay to Orkin for, for that purpose.
Hey, Miguel, Miguel?
Yes.
Give me, give me one second, I wanted to point out a couple of things as you finish up. I know we had talked before about, I know you mentioned about Youth Build being its own entity, Youth Build was recently awarded its status of a non-for-profit. So as we continually move forward, we'll be transitioning that over, it just happened in the last week or so. But we did send out an additional report showing all our non-for-profits and the cash disbursements, I know we had some conversations around trying to see what we were with cash disbursements on our non-for-profits, there's not a whole lot of activity in them. Most of the activity aligns with our development level on non-for-profits, Maple Grove Manor and Oakwood. And Youth Build has probably more, so we tried to, just starting to line that up so you can kind of see where the actual funds coming from. You probably, some of the expenses that you may see around here also is related to the COVID funding that we received from the Department of House and Urban Development so we can continually operate. And in a month or so, you'll probably see more as we start purchasing barriers and different things to help reopening process, as I said, we've been talking with the department, the health department and we had the panel discussion coming up about reopening, but it's been quite costly to try to prepare and get ready for that. But it's important because we want to keep people safe. Before I let Miguel move on, I just want to say Miguel and his team did an amazing job, you know, we identified about a couple of months ago, there was like three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of old capital fund money that was available and we were getting ready to lose, and so we really worked hard and we was able to get that money and I was happy, I want to happy to report that Miguel and his team was able to secure that money and it was drawn down in our general funds and so that, that really helps us and moves us along that way. There's no need to give money back that for any reason, because we can utilize it for the clients that we serve here. And so I want to thank him for that, but I thought that was something important, I know Miguel stepped into a new role. We made him the Director of Finance and so he's, he's proven his worth and has proven his knowledge and skill set with some of the moves he's been able to make to keep us moving forward and, and being financially strong, so just wanted to make mention that, I told you I wouldn't, wouldn't let that pass without making note of that, that's a, that's a good save for us, Miguel.
Thank you, thank you, yeah, it was a little less than three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And the last, the last item worthwhile mentioning is on page seventy-three, there was a payment to Blood Heart Consulting. These are basically several invoices for work done in two thousand and nineteen that were billed somewhat recently. But like I said, these are several, several payments, but they're not from this year. Those are, those are the highlights of, of the dispersments.
Again, tho- those were the highlights of the disbursements on, in terms of the financials for both May and June. Was it May and June? No, June and July, right?
Uh, May and June.
May and June, you're right, all right, man. And so as we move forward to get emotional approval to accept the report and to pay the bills, make sure we mention both May and June, please?
For approval of the May and June financial reports?
Move that we accept the financial report for May and June?
That's, that's. That's, that's, uh, Ron Bart, uh, made the motion, Commissioner Turnbull, second.
Okay, yeah, my, I had, maybe I have wrong.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes?
Commissioner Obachowski? Commissioner Obachowski?
You muted.
I don't think I am.
Oh, now you're not.
Yes.
Okay. Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Chairman O'Leary?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. Uh, is there a, is there a reason to go into closed session?
We have two reasons to go in a closed session, uh, one is dealing with, uh, uh, C, discussion of purchasing and leasing of real property, uh, for use of HACC and, um, A, discussion of hiring, firing or continued employment, uh, of a specific, uh, employee. Now, uh, again, in going and doing this, uh, since it is a closed session, um, we have to stop going live, actually, so ensure that we stop going Facebook Live on this.